If I could use my whistle, I would blow that right now, but I don't have it. So we're going to go ahead and get started. First, I wanted to thank you all for coming and welcome you, District 7 and/or-not-District-7 residents. I appreciate you coming. Tonight is all about the proposed charter amendment that we're talking about, the ordinance about splitting our council up. So we're going to try to stick to that topic tonight because that is what this meeting is about, to inform you of all about the issues that are involved with this particular split. If you have anything else that you want to talk about, please know I have a card up here. You may call me, you may email me, call me tonight when you get home, I don't have a problem with that. But out of respect for everyone that's here who really is coming just strictly to listen and find out more information about this particular issue, I'd like to, if we could, keep that, keep the subject, the questions related to that topic as well. I have brought in a couple of people to help me out with this presentation who are actually the authors of this ordinance. So I have Jay Castile here with me tonight, I have Bruce Kong, who's going to be the tech guy as well, so he kind of is doing it all for me. And then I figured in case I get into any trouble tonight, I figured I better bring Legal, okay? In case I say something wrong. So I have Legal here with me, Paul Esq. and Mike A. here tonight as well. So I thank y'all for coming. But tonight is really going to be talking about these things up here. We're going to start with this agenda. We're going to give a little bit of background, you're going to get history of the amendment proposal, we're going to talk a little bit about the proposal itself, we're going to give you a little more detail into it. We will go into also why do we recommend these changes, why do we think they're important? We're also going to talk about how they will impact the city, how they're going to impact the parish. And then as well, we'll talk at the end, we'll give you some opportunity to ask questions, of course. We have the blue cards, the blue papers up front. If you didn't fill in one, that's fine. If you have a question that comes up while we're in discussion, I would be happy to answer it if you raise your hand. Again, just out of respect for everyone here, not everyone's time, we have the room, I'm not even going to tell you how long we have the room in case we don't go that long, but we have the room for a little while. But again, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask and we can, we will address those as best we can, alright? I'm going to call on the expert here, he's going to go through the presentation and once we're done, we'll go ahead and have some question and answer.
And I would ask your indulgence, I'm going to sit because if I stood, some of you may not be able to see the slides. And I think I have a big enough mouth to be very correct. Alright, so what we're going to do tonight is we're just going to look at some background. Our current form of government, which is known as Lafayette Consolidated Government, was actually voted on by the parish of Lafayette and the city of Lafayette in 1992. It didn't go into effect until 1996, and since that time, there had been no major amendments. Why did they do it back then? Well, if you were around, there was a great deal of political turmoil at the city of Lafayette level, and on the parish side, it was going broke. And that's something that's a familiar theme you're hearing today, but this was back in The original charter authors intended that there would be ongoing amendments. It was not a fiasco treaty. It was intended to be changed over the years. We have gone 22 years with no major changes. They also anticipated a future consolidation of the taxes. Because remember that the parish was having financial issues and there was a hope that that would be resolved by the consolidation. The other thing that went into the original concept was that the small towns were not likely to agree to be part of Lafayette Consolidated Government, and today, that's true. Brusard, Doussault, Carron-Crow, Scott, and Youngsville are not part of Consolidated Government. And there's a very interesting history to that. When the state legislature mandated the creation of a charter commission, they specifically said that those five municipalities would not be included in the final proposal. So that's why they're not part of that, of Consolidated Government today. There are some key excerpts in the Carrick Charter, which specifically say that the city of Lafayette remains a legal entity, as does the parish. What was truly consolidated was the governmental functions of the city of Lafayette with the governmental functions of Lafayette Parish. That is truly Lafayette Consolidated Government under the administration of a mayor-president. And we also have the governing councils for the city of Lafayette and the parish of Lafayette, and that is the City Parish Council. So two different levels of government, one a legislative body and one an administrative body. That's headed over by Joel Robidoux. Every Lafayette parish registered voter participates in the election, every parish voter, including those in the other five municipalities. They participate in the election of a mayor-president, and it's the same as what used to be called a parish president. And they also participate in electing a representative for one of the nine member districts on the Lafayette City Parish Council. So the folks in Brusard, for example, actually there, they elect two mayors and they elect two councilmembers. Because they have their own mayor, they have their own council, and they do the mayor-president, and they have a representative on the Lafayette City Parish Council. As a result of the way that we have this government structure in place today, while they participate in the election of these elected bodies, of the elected representatives, we have no authority over their municipalities. They, as I mentioned, each have their own mayor and council. I say that, but must note that they are part of Lafayette Parish, so they are subject to any government action at the parish level. But as far as their municipalities, they are autonomous. We tried, and I say "we" because I was one of the primary spokespersons for what was then referred to as deconsolidation. Well, that was an embarrassing loss. It went down 60 for it. We came out of a charter commission with the recommendation, basically, to split the city and parish of Lafayette, and the voters let us know very loud and clear that they did not want to do that. In 2013, there was an effort to do what was called a Fair and Focus Plan. I think Jay participated in that, he tried to get that past council, but as in everything that's on the agenda today, it does require six votes out of nine. It's called a supermajority when we address any change in the charter. In 2015, when I ran for this particular term, as others, it was a major campaign issue, and there were some campaign promises made and pledges signed, and the intent was, let's revisit the charter and see how we can fix it. Nothing has happened since 2011 after that vote, until now. So the initiative has been taken, and that's what we're discussing tonight. So what are the issues? A lack of city autonomy. The city of Lafayette does not self-govern. Everything we do within the city of Lafayette has the involvement of representatives on the city parish council who don't have the same constituency that I have. I represent 100% of city of Lafayette residents. William Terry, I'm not picking on William, but his district only has about 6% of city of Lafayette residents. So when it comes to a vote, say like, let's say LUS, his vote carries the same weight as my vote, even though he doesn't represent as large a constituency as I do. So that really boils down to unequal representation, and if you look at it from a different perspective, I, as a person who represents only the city of Lafayette, I'm going to focus on city of Lafayette. We have a lot of issues out in the parish that need addressing. And that's the other argument that we're making tonight, is that while the city needs its own council, the parish needs its own council to address the very specific issues that they have. Alright. People will argue with us on this, but basically, this is not deconsolidation, it's a separation of the councils. It does not impact the administration of government functions under Joel Robidoux. That will continue as Lafayette Consolidated Government. What it does do, it specifically establishes a city of Lafayette-only council and a parish of Lafayette-only council. When you look at the parish council, we are proposing five council districts on the parish level. That's about 45,000 people in each district, and that's based on the numbers that were generated by the 2010 census. On the city side, we're identifying five districts of about 25,000 people in each district, again, based on the 2010 census. So why is this important, and what does it fix? Well, people say, you have, you talk about a parish that's broke, and we are broke, folks, but you have a $632 million budget, how can the parish be broke? Well, the issue comes into play that we have maintained and we work under separate budgets. There's a parish of Lafayette budget, and actually, there are three big city of Lafayette budgets. So going back to my previous comment, councilmen with few city taxpayer constituents decide how the city dollars are spent. So this proposal would have only city of Lafayette council members voting on city of Lafayette taxes and the various issues associated with government. I mentioned the budget. The parish of Lafayette's budget is $96 million out of that total of $633.5. But when you look at that budget, the majority of that budget is actually dedicated. Those are dedicated property taxes that everyone in Lafayette Parish pays. We have a property tax for the libraries, and it can only be used for that purpose. We can't shift monies from the library to the courthouse, which is another parish property tax. So of that $96 million, parish government only has about $12 million in the general fund to spend the entire year to address parish issues. As of today, we are being told that that general fund, the income that was estimated is falling almost a million dollars less than expected. So the situation only grows worse, and that's an issue that needs to be addressed by a parish council. The city of Lafayette, this is a balance of that $633.5, and the behalf of that is actually LUS, which is the utility system and the communication system. And then what comes into play, we have two sales taxes in Lafayette, every dollar you spend, you pay 2%, in sales tax. And Lafayette Utility System is a big contributor to our general fund, which by the way, is $100 million. Parish side is $12 million, and that comes into play a little bit later. So keep that in mind. Utility system today, by the way, on the current budget, is contributing $23 million to the general fund for the city of Lafayette. Where the tricky part comes into how you run Consolidated Government is how do you take a parish revenue source and three key city of Lafayette revenue sources, put them together, and consolidate to provide for the functions, to pay for the expenses of doing government? It's based on an allocation formula. It's been in play since 1996, and it determines how those, how much will the parish pay, how much will the city pay? That has always been a controversial issue. Back in the first 12 years under Walter Komo, there's no argument that the city of Lafayette paid more than its fair share. When Joey Durrell came into office, he made note of that, and he changed the formula quite a bit. When Joel Robidoux came into office, he also visited the formula, he made some changes. But when you look at the formula as it is today, it is based on, there are 24 different criteria. One is based on how much do you spend? Well, it's obvious the parish of Lafayette only has $12 million to spend. It's going to spend less. The city of Lafayette has $100 billion, it's going to spend more. So that's one criteria. The other one is based on how much money you're taking in? Well, the parish is taking in $96 billion, we're taking in the rest of the $633.5. We take in more, we spend more. So here's what happens. One example. The allocation formula says that the city of Lafayette today is paying 78% of the council office staff, which serves all nine councilmen, the president's office, and the CEO administration, the president is elected parish-wide, but the parish is paying 22%. The other breakdown that's significant is that the city of Lafayette pays 82%, and the parish pays 18% for the, basically, the accounting office. And that's based on how much money we spend. The first one is based, basically, on how much can the parish afford to pay. The concern that we have as we move forward is that there's a very dramatic shift in population. That's evident when you look at Brusard and Youngsville, Scott and Carron-Crow, they're booming. And what has happened in 1990, when this government came into play, we had about 62% of the population. I think we're being optimistic when we talk about a 2020 projected of 51.2. And where that's important is that, Nanette is an excellent example. Nanette's district actually right now has 40% out-of-city constituency. She is on the cusp of a formula that we use to determine who sits on the Lafayette Public Utilities Authority. It's composed of those members of the council who have 60% or more city constituency. We are anticipating that Nanette will become probably 58% city, so she's off of LPUA. The charter does not say that we have to have five members on LPUA, it's all based on a percentage. So of all the people that will be impacted, it would be in that district, she's 60/40, that's going to change. So population in 2020 is going to have a significant impact on overall city parish government. We need to have accountability. We think that this will provide an opportunity for the parish residents, and I'm one, you are, it doesn't matter if you live in the city or not. If you have five folks who have to be accountable for what's going on in the parish, when you talk about drainage, when you talk about roads, that's accountability. Going over real quick, shut up, this is not deconsolidation because we're not addressing the administration that stays in place today. The mayor-president role is retained. Now, I didn't change the slide, things changed last night about the term limit issue. There's been significant pushback as to why specifically, three councilmembers today, four today, who are term limited, and if we kept the current council in play, could not run again. As proposed, those four could run again. Last night, Kenneth Boudreau at his town hall specifically committed to the fact that one, he's not running, and two, he will help submit and support an amendment to attempt to say that those four who are term limited may not run again for the new council. That is on the table, and that will be voted on August the 7th. So that's a major issue, we think it's no longer should be a concern. Kenneth is a man of his word, and that will happen, but Nanette, as she will attest, and Liz have already proposed making that kind of amendment, regard. So that's key. Alright, what happens if we approve this? The elections, the next election cycle, no matter how we proceed with the current council or new council, is the fall of next year. It would be effective in January 2020. And even if we could, we cannot, by state law, even if we wanted, we can't impact the current sitting council members. By state law, they have to be allowed to complete their term, and that's through December of 2019. Feedback that we've heard, the additional parish council members, we're talking about one additional council member on the parish side, or you could say the city side, one other way, we'll end up from nine council members to 10. Talked about added cost of personnel, if you add an additional council member, currently we make $30,000, that's in the charter, a little bit more than $30,000. And we, in the charter amendment, we specifically say that the existing council staff will be shared by the city and parish councils, and it's doable. We have enough staff right now to cover nine, we think it can be easily expand, not expand, it can easily include a 10th council member. We have, for example, Nanette and I share an administrative assistant who serves five council members, the other administrative assistant serves four, she could easily take on a fifth. So that's my part of the presentation, and I appreciate Nanette giving Jay and I the opportunity as the authors to really provide some details.
Thank you, Bruce, and I think again, thank you both for your contribution. Just to kind of touch base a little bit on what we said about the amendment that's being moved forward about term limits for the termed out, I want to also add that component that's also going to be included in that amendment to where current representatives like myself who's already has served one term, if we were to be reelected on this new council, that one term would count toward our term limits of three terms. So while we're, you know, we're telling the termed out people that they can't run, so we're following suit in terms of we are as well going to be counting our, whatever we're serving now would count toward our three term limits. So that's going to be also included in that amendment. That also had come up in conversation, so I just wanted to clear that up as well. So what I'm going to do now is I have blue sheets, and what I'm just going to do is call your name and order if you sign up. And again, this is not to say that if you didn't sign a blue card that you cannot speak, but go ahead and start with this. If something comes up, again, like if you hear someone ask a question and you think, well, maybe I want to, you know, and you didn't sign in, we'll allow you to raise your hand and get involved and end the conversation once we're finished with all the blue cards. So I'll start with Ms. Lindy, here up first.
Oh, okay. Well, I looked at the 75-page document, excuse me, document, and I found it to be very confusing. And so I just am interested in it becoming more sustained and able for people to understand what it is, because my understanding is that within that document, there is a third taxing district that, you know, so that's what a lot of the citizens are fearful of. It's, you know, it's the city as the council goes back and forth, we want a clarification. I don't think that's probably difficult.
Well, first of all, lawyers draw that up, so what can I say?
That's a problem, because it's...
For us, yeah, not lawyers, yeah. But I'm going to, I'll let them chime in for a minute, but really, the point of this whole meeting, these types of meetings, to address all these things, are to help you understand. So I appreciate you asking those questions, but I'm going to defer to him in terms of the taxing districts, because I don't believe that that's an issue in...
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I've heard that there was an additional taxing district like Terry, is that not true?
Not that he drafted it.
And would this PowerPoint be available to the public? Can you come along?
We'll eventually, we'll put it on our website.
Yeah, I just think that's a major concern, is to be able to understand what it is and afford it. Because I know we asked that it be, or William asked that it be the current for two months, and now I understand why it's August 7th that you want to get it approved, but it's hard for citizens to learn about it, particularly during the summer, minds we come and go to, you know, so that's...
But again, that was...
And I explained it to Joyce, but the rest of the audience may appreciate the information. The original deferral motion was for two months, and if we had approved it, it would have actually ruled out any possibility of an election in either December or March 30th of the next year. There's a weird protocol involving the bond commission, where the bond, the December election and the March 30th election are months apart, we have to take action within a matter of weeks of doing one for December and doing one for March. So two months would have killed any other. And I'm not saying that Will was trying to do that, because not too many of us, unless you're involved as we are, knew of that protocol. The two weeks was, that is an absolute hard line deadline.
I think it's difficult for citizens during the summer, coming and going, just like you all do, to be informed as much as we need to be for this.
But to get it on the ballot for December, we have to go to the bond commission, August 21st.
So we'll continue to have...
Oh, absolutely.
Continue to have this conversation tonight, and then there's about two other town hall meetings, you have one to attend those as well, or again, this will be on, put on the phone website for you to follow up with there as well.
Okay.
Yeah, just, you know, I understand what you're saying, the summer is a time when everybody travels.
We can't read the document.
Yeah, what can I say? Yeah, right. That's why this was done, to kind of help, to kind of make it clear. I appreciate your, your comment.
Maybe what you might be talking about is that the same meeting that this charter council ordinance came up for introduction, there was a separate ordinance related to the creation of a special fire district in the unincorporated areas of the parish that was going to be a new taxing district.
Okay, that makes sense.
And it might have gotten confused, it has nothing to do with what we turned tonight, it's separate and apart from, not connected. Maybe that's what...
You can't hear back here.
Okay.
I'll speak up. Okay, next speaker, Melanie Roy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm going to defer my question, I'll just let you know, thank you for this information, it does help kind of unmuddy the waters a little bit. My question was, why have we not seen the public dashboard related to the drainage? So that's not an appropriate question for tonight, but I was happy to at least say that.
Just saying that, thank you, Melanie. We'll talk tomorrow. I bet you got that in slay though. Okay, Brett, you're up. Brett Logan.
I'm not going to start.
I mean, my memory's not the greatest, and for the terminology, it just seems to be moving very fast. I mean, it seemed like the voters said, hey, y'all get in the sandbox and play, and they still don't want to play. So every time, every few years, we come back with the same stuff, and the voters keep saying, no, get back in the sandbox and make it work, and it's not working. Y'all seem not to be able to get along, like getting in the sandbox. I don't know what the problem is. The voters don't particularly think this should happen, so we shall see again, I guess.
So you're opposed to the split, you're thinking that's...
Well, I don't know why we keep coming up with this. We keep spending money doing the same thing over and over with us. And the voters on 96 or whatever said, let's make a change, let's go here. And for some reason, it doesn't seem to work. I don't know. I don't, I don't believe they have any reason.
Well, I mean, the conversation is not a new conversation about the representation issue, we've been hearing that at the meetings. So this is, you know, while I think it maybe appears that we just decided, let's just do this, the conversation has been happening at the meetings. And so this seemed like, again, not deconsolidation, your services don't change, it's a little bitty piece of the puzzle that begins maybe the issue of looking at the bigger picture, but just the better representation component is what this is really just trying to address. And I think, you know, the voters didn't like the deconsolidation issue earlier, but this is not deconsolidation, this is strictly just talking about making better representation for both the city residents and the parish residents.
Looks like it and it smells like it.
It's air freshener. Okay, Ms. Saint Amon?
Yes.
Ms. Doussault.
My question is, 2020, there's going to be a federal, you know, the redistricting and everything? And I think Bruce had said that this is going to go into effect on 2020, is that correct?
If approved.
If approved. So why all the rush to cram this down with citizen stocks that don't understand, like these ladies have said, give time to people to accumulate the information, dissect and go through it. It just seems like a rush for nothing.
Okay, let me enlighten some of you about why we're doing this, and it's not a rush thing, because we've been talking about this so long.
Jay, could you stand up, please?
Yeah, this is not a rush thing, we've been talking about this forever. I've been here almost 11 years and we've been discussing it. So the reason we want to do it now, going into the 2020 election cycle, is if we don't do it, that means we're stuck with this government for another six years till 2024, okay? So nothing's going to happen for six more years, you know, the census is going to come in, the population's going to shift, and we're still stuck with a mess. At least we're doing this now, going into that census, you have a city council sitting, the parish council sitting in place, to where they can start doing their business, and when they come in, the census redraw their districts, everybody knows city districts, parish districts, no confusion. It allows us to go into the new election, new council members, ready to roll, new census, and know we do. Instead of six more years of this mess.
But there's still going to be a big shift in operations, 18 to 20.
Absolutely, and they're going to shift.
So why?
They're going to shift. The deal, if the shift is, the shift is going to be in the city, then in the parish. Right now, we've got nine council members, it's going to shift parish water. And that's the time that the city of Lafayette, they lose their majority on this council and their vote. And a lot of us from the council don't believe that's right. I know I didn't, back in 2013, when I tried to change it a little bit. So that's why I'm a parish guy. So when it's going to shift, you've got six more years of this stuff, and I don't think it's fair that citizens of Lafayette, the city residents, have to go to that and have to fight that. I mean, there's no sense. You may get five council members, five parish council members coming here, and they start changing things within the city, it would really upset me if I lived in the city of Lafayette. It really would. I mean, it's common, sometimes happens now. So going in 2020, when the numbers turn, and we've got the same council, same makeup, a lot of things can change. And in my mind, it's never the city of Lafayette. So that's why we're doing it now, why we're doing it. It's not a rush deal. We're discussing this, we did studies, I mean, this has been a topic of discussion, but...
It just came up with me last month.
But that's the process, the process is...
The process came up last month.
No, no, the process, no, we've been talking about this. The process to get it through.
We interrupted people about two, three years ago, then he might be moving along.
We interrupted people in 2013, it's been thrown out there. It's not something that's new, but the process to get it going is you've got to have an ordinance in place. So we have to introduce it. You introduce the ordinance, and then you start the process and the discussion on the ordinance. That's our process, that's the government process. We didn't make it, we just got to follow it. So when we found out the twenty-fourth was the, the final adoption date, I made a call to the attorney, I said, I need to know the drop dead date that this has to go into effect to, for final adoption, to turn it over to the bond commission. And the last date was the seventh of August, but the eighth has to be turned in, done. We were actually doing it a week, a couple weeks earlier. We decided, well, after hearing everybody, let's just push it to the seventh, see if we can go that date, let's do it. So that's why you see that. It's not anything that we were trying to hide or rush through. That's just a governmental process. So I want to be sure everyone understands that. It's not something we did, it's just the process.
And I just want to point out, District Seven, I'm your representative, and we're sixty-fourty. Like Bruce was saying, six years from now, with, with this, with the shift, I would, we would be more, I would be, District Seven would be more parish representation, which means I would be not on this, the LPUA board to represent the city residents, to have a voice for you on the, on the, on that particular board. So, so that's, you know, with that shift happening, you know, that, that could present a problem. If you had your own city representative on that board, on the five-member council, you would be guaranteed to have a seat.
The LPA stands for what?
LP, or, I think, Public Utility Authority.
That is...
So what's going to happen if they all sell the power plant? Can you...
That's another town issue. Another town issue, yeah. It's a discussion. Okay. We, I hate to deviate from our blue, but you all go ahead.
The only question I have is, is it won't go back, because I know why the government was formed back then, and it was put into one, was illegally annexation parts of the parish without the parish's permission, and that's why we ended up with the city parish council. I want to know if that will not happen again without the parish's permission.
Okay, okay. Without permission. Is that what you're asking, to be annexed without permission?
They, yes. They were annexation, annexation house by house to get them inside the city limits back then. That's part of the reason why that was formed.
Okay, clarify something for me, if there's a voter on the property, they cannot be annexed without their permission, correct?
They went down neighborhood, they went down by neighborhood, and they went house by house. Do you want to belong in the city? Yes. You want to belong in the city? No. So they went behind it, because the parish line was behind it. That's illegal annexation, you can't do that. And they did it then, and I want to know then that, if they're not going to do it again.
Yeah, legal formula is, the legal formula is, a majority of the, of the registered voters, a majority of the resident property owners, and twenty-five percent in assessed value of the resident property owners have to have signed a petition for the area.
It wasn't.
And it does not require parish approval.
No, it does not.
Parish has no control.
Right.
Today.
Right.
Well, you know, I'll be happy to speak with you after about that. I mean, I, I apparently, you know, that didn't, didn't answer your question to your satisfaction, so we can talk.
Okay. Hi. Can you give us some insight as to who of the councils sitting today, the entire council, and the mayor president, and the LCG administration, who had input on redrawing the new district outlines that are also going to be voted and adopted with this proposal today?
Well, I, my understanding is the authors of the ordinance were involved with the drawing of the lines, and they got together with Mike Kepner, who was for the school board, and basically he drew, he drew the lines for me.
Okay, so the entire council...
So those are the authors who were involved?
The entire council was not involved and did not have any input. Did the mayor have any input? Did LPUA have any input? Did anybody in planning and zoning have input?
I can speak to myself. I'm not sure about what input given to the mayor, but I do know that I was given some input in terms of our, this district, where the lines would be, and, and was consulted. So yes, I was, was not left in the dark, if that's where you're, you're going with this, but that...
Well, no, not, not so much you being left in the dark, maybe Jay or one of the original, I mean, the folks that drafted it can answer the question more fully. I know you can attest to what you've done, but...
The most attacked.
Yeah.
When we started looking at this, Mike Kepner volunteered his time to give me a hand to try to figure out what it would look like for five city, five city council members, five parish councils. So we started playing with it and moving it, and just kind of moving some stuff around. So there was no need really to inform any council members, because we really didn't have anything to tell them. So when that map was, was formed, we said, well, in a timeframe, we said, we can put this out as the, as the average introduction. And when we did that, we contacted as many council members as possible. And that was the map that we talked about with each one of them. Okay, that map, rather. So it's not that we left anybody out purposely, it just, it took some time to go through this process. You know, you've got to look at minority districts where it starts, and then it starts trickling around and playing with numbers and trying to get it all to balance. So this was the first map that, that actually came out with something that was decent, not the final map, because we're going to have another one coming pretty soon to kind of even it out again, because if you look at District One, it goes all the way down south. I'm not sure what that street down there, but it's, it's passed them up. I mean, you know, if I live way up north, I'm in District One, I've got to come all the way down here to campaign. So that, that's not real good for his district, it's bad. So we're going to start tweaking that and bringing that back up and moving things around again to get those numbers even again. But we didn't leave anybody out purposely, we just, this was the map that, at the time, we came out with it, and we introduced this one. It's not permanent, it will change, trust me.
And if I may tag on to that, the numbers dictating everything.
Right.
We started with the majority-minority districts, because we are still under the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. That's our starting point. And then when you look at districts like Nanette's district, every other district except Six has got some out-of-city constituency. We had to bring those districts into the city completely. For example, to accommodate Nanette, and there's no hard feelings, and Liz, I lost all of the district east of Johnson Street, because that's where Liz and Nanette reside. So that, that's the shifting that took place because of the numbers. We tried to get about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand per district, not an even number, but just about the same. So numbers dictated everything.
Population in minority districts, that's what drives the numbers in a deviation. It's a little complicated, believe me, because when you sit down and he starts talking, I don't really, I don't understand French, and I wish I did. Samedi French to me was like... But then I started seeing it, that as he was moving things, you see the numbers jump, you see them go down. And in Department of Justice, you have to have a variance of plus or five to have a percent in, in, in deviation numbers for its population in minority. So when that number starts to go on seven, eight, nine, ten, you've got to back it down. And when you back it down here, it pops up here. You've got to back this down, it jumps up on this side. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a thing that's, it's very hard to explain unless you sit there and you watch it dump. It's, it's not that you leave anybody out, or you're trying to hide something, running it through, that's just the process of how he can come and watch it dump.
No, I just think the general public would like to know that, and that's why I ask. Now, all nine members of the council were consulted as far as, do you have any issue with this or this?
I informed, I personally talked to seven of the council members. One I didn't get in touch with, and the other one, to be honest with you, let me forget, that's our relationship, and just believe it like that, okay? I'd rather, I'd rather deal with people who will listen, instead of someone who just shuts you off, so.
Okay.
But the other guys I've been contacting, who are working with me.
Is that somebody Bruce could talk to, or one of the other authors?
Well, the map is probably good, see?
The map, they've all seen it now, because it's out there now. So they've seen it. Okay. I'm going to move on to the next blue card, so we can keep moving here. Josh Carlson.
Um, my biggest concern is this, and then I have a kind of a follow-up, is that, okay, if we have two separate councils, we're going to have one solely made up of the residents of the city of Lafayette. In theory, we could have a council, a parish council made up solely of the citizens inside the city limits of Lafayette, and basically we flip-flop what we're worried of, are concerned about happening, and then the parish has no voice, or very limited voice. And, and what's proposed doesn't seem to solve some of these core issues. Mr. Cassiel says it's a mess, and we all know the parish is broke. It's been broke since consolidation in the nineties, but this doesn't fix the parish revenue issue, and there's been very few specifics of what are some of those specific votes where someone outside of the city is determining how Lafayette is spending its tax money? I mean, I mean, outside of LUS, a vote on LUS, which LUS is serving neighbors outside of the city limits of Lafayette. So it should have parish input. So, yeah, I live outside the parish, outside the city limits, and I have LUS. So why not fix some of these issues like how we annex property so that the parish can actually maintain some revenue? And we address it in maybe redistricting so that Mr. Conk isn't solely representing the city of Lafayette, and every person on the council represents both city and parish voters.
Well, first, to speak to the issue of, you know, why would we want to have the parish, just the parish, you know, as far as splitting it up, and those parish people, even if they live in the city, how can they represent the parish? Well, those are the people that voted them in, those are their constituents. So if they're, if they're representing that parish, you know, on that board, that's...
I understand how it's usually, you know, as the city goes, so goes the parish. Lafayette is by far, even though we have great cities like Youngsville and Bussard and Carencro, usually, as the city goes, so goes the parish, and so I don't want to see the city flex its, its influential muscles per se, and therefore the parish voters have very little representation.
Well, and I'd like to think that that's not going to happen.
I would like to too, it's just my concern.
That would be, that would be the reason you have those five focusing just on that. And if you think of Lafayette in terms of Bussard, Youngsville, Deuce, all the other municipalities, they have their own representation in their own council. So why shouldn't Lafayette just have their own council as well? So that's, you know, I feel like the representation component is important for both, both councils.
And I agree. I think the closer you can bring representation to the people, the best, and, you know, there's no reason why there should be a Youngsville, a Bussard city council, but not Lafayette. I understand that's my concern, is that the parish loses its voice. With that said, I don't see how this fixes substantive issues like revenue for the parish, or it seems to cause more issues than it does actually fix.
Well, it's not going to fix it, but it's going to give better attention to the issue that...
But if it's not going to fix it, why don't we make those changes like how we handle annexation and how we handle districting, then make splitting up two separate councils that doesn't really fix some of those issues.
But if you have a parish council that's really focusing on the annexation issues in the parish, they can focus solely on that without the chatter from the, from the city council, from the city group. So it, to me, it just, you're able to focus a little bit better on, on all the issues you're concerned about. And yes, I would, I agree with you that it's not going to solve the budget issues, but it will maybe hopefully bring certain things to light that, that each council can... That's, that's the whole issue.
Sorry, I just kind of dovetails with what he was saying. That was, one of my concerns is that it's great if the parish has its own council, the city has its own council, but if the parish is broke, it's great to have five people focused on it, but they have no money to do anything about it. So it's a council to make us feel better.
They will have a challenge, they will, but those...
How do the annexation money change, how do you change that?
Well, that's the challenge, that's almost the challenge. But because I think it is a step toward fixing it. I don't, I don't think it's going to fix it. I don't think there's a quick fix to meeting, but I do think it's a step toward fixing it, toward addressing it and understanding what the needs are a little bit better, so... Yes?
Going along the money lines, LUS, I heard it said twenty-six million dollars goes into, what, the parish?
City general fund.
City general.
The city asset.
So the sale of LUS, and where would those funds go?
City of Lafayette. It's a city asset, no matter what you do with it, the city of Lafayette.
Does that say, does this have anything to do with that sale?
No.
No.
No, this is a totally separate issue.
Except that it dissolves, that LPUA...
Well, I don't know. Man, I, 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 okay, I, I'll take your, I'll take your word for it. I'm, I'm...
The current charter says it now, that if LUS were disposed of, sold, it goes to the city of Lafayette. So the current charter says it, and after these amendments, assuming they pass, that stays the same. It's a city asset, always will be a city asset, and it will go to the city of Lafayette.
The LPUA will be dissolved with this.
And in political terms, if Mr. Robideau makes a proposal, whatever, on LUS, it's going to be decided by this council today. Because if he's going to do anything, he's going to do it while in his current term. There's no reassurance he's going to be back in office, nor will I, for that matter, in the next four years. So it's going to be done by the current city parish council. This has no impact on that at all.
All right, I'm going to move to the next card. Michael Lunsford.
I want to get a couple of little things out of the way real quick. You talked about the three taxing districts, Mr. Esq., out there in sections two dash seventeen A, and they also grant bond authority to three separate organizations in five dash zero eight. And that's in the...
What, you said two seventeen A?
Two dash seventeen A. And this is not the current charter, this is the one that we had to get a copy of through public records request, last updated on July the thirteenth. Now, it may also be in earlier versions, but that's the one I've been working from, is the most recent I have.
Okay.
The proposed charter.
The proposed charter, okay.
So two seventeen A simply splits the existing council, or clarifies that the city council, or the city, and the parish council, or the parish, are the ones that can, are the taxing district. As opposed to consolidated councils being the taxing district authority for both.
Well, it leaves the city, it leaves the parish, and it leaves the city parish as three separate taxing authorities. And I can show you the version I have if you don't have it.
Sure.
I believe Mr. Abear's names associated with that update, but I'll, I'll have to double-check what I have here.
I mean, we're looking at the same thing, I don't see what you're...
Okay, well, we'll look at it here in a minute, I'm glad you all are here, we can look at it afterwards. To Mr. Conk, the bond commission, I called the treasurer's office, and I asked them, and they said generally when an election happens, like the bond would meet, the bond commission would meet the eighteenth, the election's on the fifteenth, they would have an ad hoc meeting beforehand, it would just be a matter of reaching out and setting something up, and they usually take care of that. So while two months might be a little long, they did tell me that they could probably have something worked out in October if necessary.
And Mr. Lunsford, when I, when Jay and I inquired of our legal counsel as to what was the absolute hard deadline, if we had any wiggle room?
Right.
We were told August seventh is it, because the bond commission will meet on the twenty-first. I'm in no position to argue, I have no clue as to how that operates.
I understand, I just, doing my due diligence, I made a phone call.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate it, Michael, you and I have talked a lot.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do, we will do an ad hoc meeting, is what they told me, because of the proximity to the election. Oh, Ms. Cook, I wanted to ask you about the term limit issue.
Yes.
Right now, the way term limits work is you can serve twelve years in the city, I I say right now. In the, under the proposed document, 12 in the city, 12 in the parish, and you can flip-flop, kind of like we have people doing in Baton Rouge between house and city. This won't address that. It won't tell you, you've got 12 years, you're done. You can still switch. I think maybe y'all should look at updating that to say, you should sit out at least one term regardless of which section you're in. That's just something...
We talked about that. We stuck to just the term down and then the current, you know, council members counting their, whatever service they've already toward the new council. We kind of, we looked at that as well, flipped back and forth, but, I mean, they allow that in the state, you know, senate, and the house of rep. So I'm not sure if that's something we want to legally address, or if it would be an issue. I mean, I don't know how often people, if you have a constituent base, like if I were to run for the, just the city and I had a constituent base, I would feel like I should be loyal to them. Why would I want to be flipping back and forth? So I don't know how often that would happen.
Well, you serve 12 years at one, and then you're term limited, so you would switch and serve 12 years at the other, or four and then come back. Well, you say that, but there are others that have expressed frustration with term limits.
Maybe so. We need to look at it as well.
All right. So the original reason for my filing a blue card is I was curious. I've spent a lot of hours looking at the 75-page charter document, the proposed one, and the new one that's come out, I say come out, that we had to file a request for. It doesn't look like it's finished. It looks like they're still working on it.
It is still a working document in terms of, I mean, we've...
At what point will there be a finished document for the public to review, and how long will they have to review it?
Well, I say it's finished, the amendments are still happening, but you've got red line issues in there still, and not based on what?
We're still making changes to it as we go along. It's been another one this morning. We're just trying to make sure it's fair across the board and that we don't miss anything.
Right.
As soon as we get it completed, it's gonna be released to the public, all council members, the public, everybody's gonna get a chance to look at it. It shouldn't be much longer. I'm hoping we can get this done by the end of the week. Our attorneys have been working long and hard on this thing. They just about have it wrapped up. I threw a stick in the spokes this morning, so they're trying to fix that. So we hope by the end of the week it's ready to go, and we can turn it loose to the public.
We see the concern. You've got a two-week window, had not been delayed another two weeks because a member couldn't make it to make the sixth vote. It wouldn't have been pushed back. We would have been voting on this, or y'all would have been voting on this Tuesday coming. And we don't have a completed document yet. Now, I know we've got two more weeks, maybe, okay, we can take a breath now, but we're still, we're three weeks out, and we don't have a completed document. You see, it does, that's why it feels so rough. I haven't been able to review the entire document. I've been working on it for a week.
It's not, it's not that we're rushing it again. You keep saying that. I think you need to understand we're not rushing it. If it was to hold on this Tuesday night, the document would be finished, and it would be put out to the public. That's the process this government goes to. It's not rushing it. That's just the process for us to make it in December against the election. Throwing that out there, rushing it through, trying to hide some, you need to stop saying that because that's not true. As this document is developed, and when it's gonna be finished, like I said, by Friday, we'll edit that out. If we couldn't have finished until Friday, and our meeting had to be Tuesday night, then that's just how it falls. That's just government, how it works. I didn't make it, I didn't invent it, I don't agree with it, but that's the rule we play by, okay? And as far as not knowing these issues, that's not true. These issues have been broadcast for years. Years.
You still don't have the final document.
We don't have a document to review. We haven't had one for years.
Again, the document will be released if it's complete. If it's not Friday, this thing's sent out.
You ought to have a period of time after the final document is done.
Well, if I may, this very quickly.
An advocate would say it's a period of time for that document, once it's done, then the clock should stop.
The only document that's on the table today was what was introduced on July 10th. The amendments that Jay is referring to will still have to be voted on by the council because we'll have to amend what was introduced on the 10th.
I understand that. I understand that.
And the amendments, from what I've seen, are very mild.
I understand that.
Are those gonna be available, too?
Sir?
Are the amendments gonna be available, too?
That's what he's talking about.
Because generally, those amendments come out, and it's a sprawling mess, and it just, the agenda for the meeting doesn't come out, I mean, it's a Tuesday meeting. I think, I've been lucky to catch it on a Thursday before, usually, it's a Friday afternoon before the Tuesday minutes come out. And if there's a long list of amendments, it's gonna take more than a couple of days over the weekend to look at it.
You're gonna have a summary sheet of the amendments. That way, you have to go through the study, the document, and if it's a summary sheet...
Look, the reality is, in politics, is they will put stuff in and not give you enough time to read it. Now, all the guys here...
What are you talking about?
May I finish? And that is by high integrity persons, they come. And I trust her immensely. But the reality is, is you're dealing with a group of people here who don't trust politicians. And what they do, it is the nature of politicians, and it is, it is impactful to put in things that are in a document and don't give the voters a time to comment on it or to digest it. And that's what looks like a fear that we're headed towards.
But I can assure you we're not hiding anything? That's why you're gonna get a summary sheet?
I'm not saying no.
No, no, no.
I'm not saying no. I'm just saying that that appears.
Answer your question. I got you. I understand exactly what you're saying. You don't trust anyone. That's fine.
I don't trust politicians. That's what he said. That's what he says.
For a second, let me say something. Let me just say something. Okay. All the discussion about what it currently says that you're not comfortable with, or you don't know what it says yet, basically, when it comes to us to vote on August 7th, if, you know, you'll see it before that, but then this, if we vote on it, it still has to go to you to vote in December. So you have all that time to look at it, you still have time to review it, but you're gonna vote on it.
But we want, we want to be able to look at it, understand it, and talk to you about it before you vote.
Well, and that's what this is for. That's what this is for.
Now, no, but we don't have a final document.
We don't have a final document.
It's not at all that.
That is what's happening.
And we want to be able, we want to be able to sit down with you and discuss it before you vote.
Okay, well, I haven't seen everything in it as far as, all the changes either, okay? So I'm with you a little bit on that, but what you can do, I mean, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm putting the information out that we have so far. All the amendments that I told you, that I told you were my amendment that was coming, it's not in there yet. It's going to be put in there. So if you have more questions about it, you, please, call me. That's, that's what I, I would love to give you that information as soon as we finish.
I understand, but that's not my fault.
Well, I have a question and a comment. We're citizens that vote for you. We're not getting paid $30,000. Everything that I do politically is a volunteer. So we don't have the time, and a lot of these people are working people. They don't have the time to look through this, and we're saying we want the completed document before you vote on it. And we do feel like it's being rushed, and that's why citizens don't trust government. It's too complex to read, it's too quick, and it just goes on and on.
You will have...
We elect you to represent us. To represent us. We are not getting paid to do this.
Well, then you will have a completed, you will have the completed document before we vote on it. You will have the summary sheet of the amendments by Friday.
I think Jay just committed to releasing all of the amendments in advance. The document doesn't become complete until the day that we vote on amendments, and the public will have the opportunity, once they have reviewed, to make comments that night on every vote that we have, on every amendment, to achieve the final document.
Okay, Barry.
I do have, I'm here to listen. Don't know which way I'm leaning at this point. I do know that it begins with trust, and we do not hear trust in this room, anywhere. I do, I question when this is, it said that it's been looked at since 2011, but there is no details or a final document or answers to some of the questions here, but we're supposed to accept that like this, when certain council members said they've been looking at it since 2011? So how can we interpret what's happening if you can't understand how this process goes? And the process is the city council. The city council and process is the same thing as the government. So I don't want to hear that it's processed, the process is screwed up, that's what we're trying to tell you now. That it's time to change the process, and it needs to be changed before anything else changes. We would welcome information and then be able to make a determination on if we agree with you. I'm not saying I don't. I'm thinking it's a good idea right off the bat. Other, the other thing I have is the other three members who have proposed it, are they also willing to say they will not run for another term?
Yes, I'm not running either. Mr. Woodrow's not running, and I'm not running. Mr. Terrio said he wasn't running, and Mr. Bellard had a committee, so I'm not sure.
But this is why we're imposing that amendment as far as the term.
I understand, but if it's been worked on and looked at since 2011, how come there isn't more information? And why are we being asked to judge and vote on this so quickly? If we only have two weeks, and then I know we don't vote till December, so I guess there's some time, but that's still not 2011, 2012, 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018. That's a lot less time.
Could you give us a commitment that you'll have a final document at least two weeks before you vote on the amendments, so, and that we could have a conversation with you about how we feel about the final document?
I could commit to that, yes, based on the odds I'm getting here, that it should be done by...
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I agree. No, I'd be happy to. I mean, once we have the final document, yes.
But that document will be with proposed amendments.
Right. Yeah, it won't be, it may not be the final document, but it will have all the proposed amendments in terms of, and we can discuss which ones you like, which ones you don't like as far as the ones. Are you comfortable with that, Jeremy?
Yeah, yeah, it sounds good.
All right, let's see. Actually, Barry, you were next. So you, are you good?
I don't know if, and I'm sure, we've gone downtown lately and seen all the boarded-up buildings, places for sale and for rent, that's all through Lafayette City. How does that affect our, our city taxes? Do we have enough, do we want to do? What's the game plan for the city of Lafayette?
Well, again, if we're...
That needs to be looked at before we can decide this, sir? We support ourselves.
I think the fact that we can focus, like if you have your five focusing on those issues with the city, just those five, just getting to vote on those issues, that, that really is the point of the split. So we can address, as a city council representative, just those issues, and the parish, basically doing the same with just the parish. So, yeah, I mean, there's specific issues in each district, that, in each area, that really each council could maybe, you know, focus on a little bit if they were, if it was just that.
But I do look around and see lots of closed businesses and...
Yeah. Okay, I have the next one, Vernon.
Just, ma'am, I want to be sure I understood you right. Y'all said that the only added cost that we will have is one council, and there won't be any more added departments, anything rebuilt, anything?
Just one more representative.
All right.
Okay, now I have Mark. Mark, you ready?
Oh, yeah. I just want to thank you guys for putting this on, by the way. It's, you know, I live in Lafayette City proper, and I really appreciate the efforts being put forward in allowing my tax dollars to be spoken for by the city council that represent the city of Lafayette specifically. I appreciate the efforts, and I think sometimes we get stuck in the weeds about this, that, and the other. And by the way, I appreciate the weeds very much, so, right? I think it's important. I think at the end of the day, though, we're, at the end of the day, we're asking for more time, but this isn't going to a vote until December 8th, right? And I understand that we may want to have one-on-one conversations with our councilmen up to the last minute, and by all means, you can show up that Tuesday and do so, but between now and December 8th, there's plenty enough time for us to be educated on what's being presented. And one, make a decision about this, and also, two, if we're unhappy with that relationship, we just vote those councilmen out, right? But, I mean, I don't know how much more time you guys need to make a decision. I mean, this is five months here. That's plenty of time, right, to say yea or nay.
Five months of what? You have the paperwork?
No, no, five months to determine whether or not what they vote for is appropriate. They're gonna vote for something in a couple of weeks, and they're gonna say, hey, it's on the ballot, and then you can say yea or nay to it. We're getting stuck in the weeds on something right now that, and we're saying we, we don't have time, but we have plenty of time. We have plenty of time to make a determination that, hey, I want to be represented by our councilmen.
And I agree. And since 2011, there should have been plenty of time to have this all done. I don't understand. That much time, everything should be...
Should be perfect, right, and a vote. Sometimes it's not. And we don't have, we don't have that, we don't have that pretty picture for you right now, but this is what we have.
When was it voted down before? I remember seeing this line. 2011. Right. So this happened once before, and a citizen said no.
It was totally disconsolidated.
Right. But still, citizens had a voice, voted down the idea. And if I understand correctly, we're trying to balance representation, because sometimes some representatives are getting pulled between whether they represent the parish or whether they represent the city. And so this is just an effort to try to balance it out, to have the representation focus on a more specific area, instead of getting pulled between, well, who do I serve? You know, I got half my constituents over here, or 30% there, you know, so...
It's really the core of it.
That's what this is.
I don't have a blue card. Go ahead, yeah. All right. We threw the blue cards out the window about 10 minutes ago. My name's Carly Almalar. I know several of you in the room. I just wanted to echo Mark and thank Bruce and Jay and Nanette for hosting tonight. And just kind of, from my perspective, I think one of the things that I would just like to share is that I think that, you know, I look at this issue as almost fundamental to our American way of life. Right now, we have people who don't pay taxes, who get a say in how tax dollars are spent, and I just don't think that that's how our American form of government was founded, the principles. And so while there are a lot of details, I also went to Monday night's town hall meeting, and there was a gentleman there who expressed, expressed his citizenship as a Lafayette city resident, as second-class citizenship, because there are people who don't live in the city who get a say on how his city tax dollars are spent. I know we have a lot of issues to fix, but many of you know I worked in government for about eight years. A lot of things, whether you like it or not, you have to fix incrementally. And so I applaud and thank the councilmen here for making this effort. They have spent a lot of time on it, and I know that you all will have an opportunity to read the full proposal before August 7th, as Nanette committed to you, and then again, before December 8th. And if on December 8th you aren't happy with the proposal, I encourage you to vote no at that time.
The American way. How are you gonna count the votes? It's a parish-wide election. You city people? If you vote no for it inside the city, will the people outside the city vote yes for it and pass it over your vote? How are the votes gonna be counted? One man, one vote. Are you voting as a city resident or as a parish resident? Second question. You set up the two councils. The city decides they want a mayor. We want to have our own mayor, okay? Do y'all believe that? We can do that. Because the city council can propose an amendment to the charter to give us a mayor. But the five parish council members can tell us yes or no. You're under parish rule. So it only takes three out of five to vote. Look at the map. Is there corporate limits drawn on that map? I suggest you put them on it to show the city of Lafayette how we're in two small districts. And the parish of Lafayette, see the big orange down at the bottom, the pink? That's parish. One vote. See everything to the left? Scott, Eric? That's another parish vote. See everything in the blue up north? That's Carancro. That's another outside consolidated government parish vote. Three will always outvote the two. I suggest you vote no.
And in reference to your amending the charter, if you read the proposed document, it requires that there be a two-thirds vote on both the city council and parish council. I know five doesn't divide by. It's going to be four out of five to advance anything on both councils.
So if the city advances something, the parish can vote?
Absolutely. That's exactly right. Do I like it? No. But to do anything else at this point would really further the deconsolidation argument, and I don't think the public is ready to vote for that.
Y'all want to know why? I suggest you watch the council meetings. That's all I have to say, Barry.
Thank you, Andy, because that's one point we have not made. Look at, and you know, you look at the council agendas. How much parish business is on a council agenda?
I have no clue.
It's, well, it's mostly city.
Let me just ask, because I am your representative, and I am curious and interested in what your opinion of just the whole council split. If I could have a show of hands, if, if, if you're comfortable with the idea of having a representative just focusing on the city of Lafayette and one focusing just on the parish? If you're comfortable with that, can I have a show of hands? It's not a commitment to the.
Which way do we want you to vote? And let's see what your hands will vote on.
Say what?
Which way do we want you to vote?
Well, that's why I'd like to know what's your thoughts on it. That's, that's where I'm going. I mean, I am representing you, so I'm.
Vote for Florida, no.
That's for hand raising, just like class.
You don't want to commit. You don't want to show me, okay? I got you. It is a secret ballot. I understand that.
I would like my city taxes to stay in the city. I would like that to happen.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
There are issues, but that is the overall feeling.
I get, yes, Sandy.
I just have one more question, since we get five minutes at the meeting. Will you be asking us to speak on each amendment? Or will you put all the amendments in one group so we cannot address each one of them?
One vote for everything.
One, one vote for everything?
All the events will be put into.
You don't feel comfortable with one, we're not speaking.
No, for speed.
Really depends on whether or not any one or more of the council members at the time of final adoption wish to offer any additional amendments on the floor. You could have multiple amendments voted on. You could have multiple votes until you get to final adoption vote. And every time a vote is taken, we allow public comment prior to that vote. So you would, you're going to have an opportunity to speak on however many amendments are offered.
Okay, before we say goodbye, if you signed in and you have an email, hopefully you did sign in as permitted to Jeremiah in the back. When I do get the final copy of all the amendments in there, I will email you, and we can, we can either have another powwow, whatever you're interested in, and we can talk about it some more. I'm, I'm happy to do that as well if you are, if you feel like you need more information on the front end before we do the, we actually get to vote. So I will commit to doing that for you.
I have one question. I mean, there seems to be, I mean, I'm getting the idea that there's a difficulty with information getting out. I mean, you know, we do have the internet. I mean, is there something I'm missing? Why?
It's not there.
You put it on Facebook, you know? I mean, it seems like everybody here could know basically the whole thing, whatever. And somebody amends it, you know, you put a little amendment there, and people get to look at it and say, I like that, I don't like that. I mean, as far as, you know, people getting represented by somebody that's slipping after their entrance, I mean, that's kind of a no-brainer. But there's also, I mean, like, if I'm living in the city and there's a Cooley or something, and, yeah, I need to get it cleaned up or whatever, wired or whatever. There's somebody in the parish downstream a little bit, and they don't want to because they don't have the money for it, okay? So that's going to affect me, you know? So there's got to be some cooperation between city and parish.
Hopefully, the two separate councils will be, I mean, and those kind of issues will have to cooperate with each other, of course. They'll have to be talking in terms of, yeah, because we can't fix one and knock the other, so they will have to cooperate.
Well, getting back to the dissemination of information, I mean, somebody was saying they had to make a foyer or something to get the info. And, I mean, it doesn't seem like it should be that difficult. I mean, you know, maybe there's something I don't know about it.
Well, like I said, as soon as I have the information, the complete information, I will put it out to you.
But the drafts that were intro'd are online today.
The initial is there. I mean, it was at the last meeting, so it's been intro'd, so, yeah.
It's online now.
Okay, okay, well.
It is online.
Go to the website.
I can show you where it is.
Okay, as are the maps. Isn't that obvious right there?
Yes.
Ms. Cook, can you talk a little bit more about how these two governments are going to work together? You brought up a great point. If the city does something, does the parish have to agree and vice versa?
Well, they wouldn't have to agree, but if it was something, as he proposed, a drainage issue in. Yeah, they would have to definitely work together on something like that. They don't necessarily have to agree, you know, but hopefully they would be able to work together.
Well, I kind of think about, we talked about it's all funded from the city. It's funded from the general fund, but it's a parish asset. So is the city going to have control over it?
No, the city of Lafayette is the only body that has a recreational property tax. The parish does not. And any recreational facilities that you see today are owned by the city of Lafayette.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That was my point. It's a city revenue.
Parish asset, that's what you put me.
I'm sorry. But it is a parish asset. It's in the parish.
No, it's a city asset.
Okay, so if, let's say I'm on the council in the parish, I have zero control over those parish assets?
Is the city, like this building, this green building?
All the parks, like Arsenal Park.
And Arsenal Park, that's a parish park.
Yeah.
But it's city funded.
Parish funds fund that.
Okay, I was just told city.
It's a recreational property tax, only it's just in the city of Lafayette.
The city structure, the buildings, the parks within the city limits of Lafayette are paid for by the city citizens of Lafayette. That's a city asset.
Right.
If it's like Carancro Park, Arsenal Park, a couple of them on the parish. The parish general fund funds those, manages on those parks. That's a parish asset.
So it'd still be controlled by the parish?
Parish, those parks, outside the city, all cities.
And the administration would still remain as it is today? The mayor, president would administer.
Correct. But as far as working together, like if there's a drainage issue in Youngsville? Yes.
Yes.
And, and there's a parish council member, and there's funds. Do we work with, I mean, are they going to go back to the city?
The parish funds, they, they cover. That's their money. Their city money is parish.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any way you can maybe put a pro forma budget showing, these are the, these are the revenue numbers today? This is how they're going to, revenue expense, revenue expense with the split? I would look to the citizens that know where their money is kind of going. It's not going to be.
The revenues don't change.
This doesn't, this, this proposed charter amendment, this thing we're talking about tonight, has nothing to do, it doesn't change that at all. We can still provide you with that, but this would not affect that.
It's, it's going to change the way the parish registers its debt or not. They may not have the money.
Well, they don't have the money.
It matters to us as well. We can see why the money breaks out, though, versus just a bunch of words on the screen. Give me some financial numbers.
It's a separate screen.
We'll show how their screen splits, whether the parish's revenue is.
Thanks. If there's any other discussion on this particular issue.
How they've been prepared.
Excuse me. There was a slide that said, "Budgets remain separate for the past 22 years." Please provide separate budget documents. One for the city, one for the parish. The city people can look at their city money. The parish people can look at their parish money, and you can see where it's going. But as long as you put it in the one big thick document and according to the amendments, you will have dual budget hearings instead of separate budget hearings. That's what I read on the, on the Puffworks. You'll have dual budget hearings. But now, for this coming budget, please.
You just want the documents separate.
Separate docs. You can put them in one big book. Make sure you got it divided.
That's a, you talked to the chief financial officer about it. I respect that. Yes, ma'am.
Nanette, person that Jay, Bruce, come in, y'all for doing this. I'm a District Nine, Youngsville City Councilman, so don't blame me. I come in this because, of course, we don't have a meeting in our district. So I come in, y'all for doing this. It's not easy taking these elections. The one, the one thing that I keep wondering, and my concern mainly for the constituents in Youngsville, is saturating, well, decreasing the representation from the parish side. And I get it, it's adding one council member for y'all as a whole. But, you know, when I look, when I look at us, just Youngsville, and, you know, we're about 15,000 people. We have one clerk that handles five council members and a mayor. Wouldn't it be a better avenue to go down? Maybe keeping the nine parish council members, looking at salary decreases, looking at maybe making that staff work a little bit more for you, or less for you. Maybe you don't need as much from them. Because I think what's going to happen is the districts, and I'm seeing, I heard 40,000 or so per district. That's state, state senate-type districts. And a person to represent that with a local person, that's difficult. I mean, I'm sure, I mean, you know, I represent the entire city of Youngsville, like the other five council members and the mayor. And 15,000 people, that's a lot. I, I just, has there been any talk about not having just five? And I gave the thought process initially.
We have talked about that.
And, and I just wanted, you know, the other thing that I did want to say is that, you know, the reason why I bring that up is because, like, we've had these conversations, roads, infrastructure, and drainage. I know we had the rededication, which I don't know where we're at with that. That's the other worry, is that things are going to be continued to put on the back burner and forgotten about. And as we know in South, you know, we, we have devastating issues too.
Well, in answer to your, from the onset of what Jay and I, our purpose was to keep the additional costs as low as we could. And that's where we came up with the five and five, one official council. Could we do nine? Absolutely, because then you'd have more or less, which you have today, 25,000 per district on a parish-wide basis. But you would then have to add to your council staff because they would go from 10 people to 14 people. And our staff right now cannot handle that. That's a lot of work for, because they get, while your staff handles the Youngsville, if we handle the whole parish, the council staff does.
So, and I guess that's what I'm, so you have one person just handling your stuff?
No, 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 no. There's one administrative assistant.
One is five, one is four, yeah. Two secretaries.
And we think the existing council staff can handle ten. They handle nine now.
Yeah. I just said.
The logistics, I mean, in a perfect world, yes.
No, yeah.
If we could do nine, and we could hire all the secretaries, support for those nine, that would be, that would be great in, you know, funding, you know, the budget. That's, that's all of a sudden you have to consider if you're going to be doing that. So, but I, I do, I do understand your point in terms of the numbers. Now, you know, you have five in the parish. Okay, so in my particular district, if five, Broussard's included in that as well. And so between the representation that you have in your unincorporated area and the connection that you have with the Broussard Council, that, you know, the support that you can have from them as well to help, you know, the fear is that you won't be able to, you won't be able to see all the issues. It's, it's, there's one person not being able to see the whole district. And that was what, you know, one of the things that we've heard. But with, with the help from, in your case, with the Youngsville Council, with the help with your parish representative, if the two work together, then, then basically you would see, you would, you would have a better eye on everything that's going on. So it's not like you're just you one person in that whole, in that whole parish district.
No, and I guess, and I'm not, you said it earlier, it's a while ago. Perfect. This isn't going to be perfect. There's no way. I mean, y'all all been in government all the time. Everything we vote on is never perfect, and I get that. And I think the public understands that you want it as perfect, as good as possible as it can be. I just think that it's really doing a disservice to the entire parish. When you look at surrounding parishes that have up to 12 council members, nine, 10, 11, 12, I, I think it's a disservice because you're looking at three people for the entire parish that can sway something very quickly instead of five sitting. You know, and again, I, I bring that up only because y'all are voting on something. I think it should be considered, maybe, you know, readjusting staffing. I mean, even, you know, ask the council members, do you really need to make what you're making? I mean, I make at least a little small 11,000 a year. And, and again, y'all do a lot more than us. I'm not, you know, saying that 30,000 is not worth it, whether it is or not. And again, I do agree that city of Lafayette, like Jay, I have no dog in a fight except in fact, I'm representing my constituents. But yes, the city of Lafayette should have a council. I used to live in Lafayette. I grew up in Lafayette. I think it should. You know, but I, I don't want the parish to, you know, suffer any more than it already is.
Just a quick point that we've not discussed tonight. We talked about Broussard, Carancro, Dussault, Youngsville, Scott, and Lafayette, but we talked about Lafayette Parish. What has always amazed me is that there are 70,000 people who do not live in a municipality. That's about one-third of the parish of Lafayette.
We get zero. We get zero. We get dog catches.
And that's why you need a parish council addressing your issue.
Oh, the dog catchers don't come out there. I'm asking for the six. We had a problem with, but I pay property tax for it, but they won't. And we had a problem with my neighbor's dog came and attacked my dog on my property, called the sheriff. They won't come. I had to get Broussard cops who couldn't do anything, but they could at least take a report.
The whole point I was trying to make, we talked municipality, we got a lot of people.
Yeah, but we got zero, man.
Okay, on that note, we probably even have these meetings like once a week, apparently. I'm not opposed to that, but, but I do first of all want to thank you all for coming. And I hope you got a little snippet, if not, a little more information, a little better understanding of where we're trying to go with this. And I will, again, it's on the website, like we said, the original is on the website right now. The amendments are coming. I promise we'll put those out. And I will contact you, you contact me if you want a one-on-one, or you want to get a group together. I am, I'm not opposed to that before the vote. But I do, I do thank you for coming tonight and being very patient with all of us. And, you know, we, that's what, that's why we do this, so we can, I want your, I want your input. I want your opinions. I want, you know, even though you, you know, came at me a few times, it's okay. It's all good.
The preceding program was made possible in part with production assistance provided by AOC Community Media.